Thank you and welcome this evening, folks. Roll call, please, Mr. Dankert.
Mayor King.
President.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
President.
Councilmember Pachusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Obala.
Present.
Waller.
Present.
Osmah.
Present.
Good form, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number one is adoption of the agenda with the additions of, in the consent agenda, some licensing's. And then also, Mr. John Mueller, Commissioner Mueller would like to speak under recognitions and awards. So with those additions, looking for item number one motion. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item number two is a motion approving the minutes from our June 21st, 2021 meeting. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number three, recognitions and awards, a last-minute add. Commissioner Mueller, John, you have some things to say? Welcome.
Not a lot, actually. And I just want to start out with, obviously, city council meetings are much more exciting than county commissioner meetings. And I appreciate that. So, no, I just have been, since the election, the special election, been trying to get around to the different city and township meetings and meet the folks and put a face to the name for those that don't know me. Not quite the way I would have ever planned to win a commissioner race, and it's unfortunate. We certainly miss Tim Gabrielson. But hope to pick up and carry on with the work that Tim was doing, the good work. I will represent those in First Ward Precinct One in the city of Austin, as well as Red Rock Township, Lansing Township, City of Mapleview, and Udolpho Township, Waltham and Waltham Township. So we have a big chunk of the western part of the county. But I look forward to working with council members, mayor, and city administrator and city staff on issues that we have jointly in common. So just wanted to stop by and say hello.
Thank you, John. Also, thanks for your years of service with the Austin PD. John, for those who don't know, John retired out of the Austin Police Department and then was newly elected onto the county commissioners. Thanks for both services.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
Moving on to item number four, the consent agenda, looking for a motion. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Under the public hearings, we have, item number five is a public hearing for deferred sanitary sewer assessments. The amount to be assessed is 262,792 dollars and 90 cents at three-and-a-half percent interest for 10 years. Stephen or Ann?
I'll give it a start, and then Ann, you can add anything that I've missed. But we've talked about this at a previous council meeting and also at work session. These are deferred assessments for sanitary sewer work that was completed back in the late 80s and 90s. At that time, it was decided that if they were empty lots, the cost for sanitary sewer would be deferred to a future date. And in working with the council, we've decided that that future date has come and looking to recoup the costs from this old infrastructure that was constructed, in some cases, 25 to 35 years ago. We have spoken and talked with multiple property owners to clarify, answer any of their questions, and discuss the reasoning for these assessments and what they pertain to. And included in tonight's assessment roll, there are a few properties that have been struck from the list, as they have either come in and paid, or their assessment has been resolved. There is one additional property late this afternoon that we researched and discussed, and that is regarding, there are two assessments for the Baumann property. This would apply for both the sanitary sewer and the water. We would recommend striking those from this assessment roll as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ann, if she has anything to add, or to the council if there are any questions.
As Stephen stated, we received a number of payments for these items already, and a couple, you know, have been resolved through other matters that the council's been briefed on. Right now, the assessments are proposed to be for a period of 10 years at three-and-a-half percent, with the final payment being due this year on August 9th. As the council discussed at the last meeting, they may want to change some of those terms. It's, that's at the council's discretion.
And of those people that have paid, has anybody paid the interest? Any interest?
No. All of these have been deferred with no interest. So no interest would start accruing until August 10th, because it would be due by August 9th. So no one has paid any interest on any of these since the projects were completed.
I guess I'll start it off here. As we talked at the last hearing, at last month's meeting, about some possible alternatives to this, I guess I would propose assessing these at the amount that they are with no interest. And I guess the term, 10 years, or if we wanted to even go 15 years, I guess I wouldn't have a problem with that, if anybody has any comments or thoughts beyond that.
Anybody else?
I agree with Jeff. I'll go along with that.
I could be persuaded on the 0%. I'm not sure that I would want to string it out past 10 years. That seems a pretty long time, but 0% for 10 years, I would be on board with.
Okay, I agree.
I think 10 years is a good number.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the last conversation we had, it was, you know, I think philosophically, waiting this long is problematic, but if people have paid, or at least, I don't know that we want to start issuing refunds and things like that, but I mean, if we haven't had the money for 35, 40 years, in some cases, charging interest where it feels wrong. And so I think 0% is a good compromise.
And this is a public hearing, so is there anybody from the public wishes to come forward to speak? Ron? Just give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Ron Mecklenburg. I live at 1701 12th Street Southwest. I own several properties. I've got an amount to about 10 acres. It's zoned Ag 1. A house is located on the northwest corner of 12th Street and 16th Avenue. And my business, Stivers Nursery Landscapes, has been located on 12th Street and 17th Avenue. I don't have any city sewer water into my Stivers building. I have paid for 1,082 feet of curb and gutter and asphalt along 17th Avenue. I've paid for the sewer, water, and asphalt for the house on 16th Avenue. Right now, I have two deferred assessments for sewer on 16th Avenue on the properties, and I have one deferred asphalt assessment on the properties. I have a signed agreement with the city of Austin that defers the asphalt east of my house on 16th Avenue until such time as Stivers is plotted. I gave a copy last time. I can get you all a copy again. I have copies of resolutions that formal council persons have passed anonymously deferring sewer property, for sewer on the other properties on 16th Avenue. So there was resolutions passed. Mayor Q was the mayor at the time in 1985 that some of this property was assessed. So at this time, my land is still zoned A1 agriculture. Both 16th and 17th Avenue remain dead-ended. I only use a limited amount of the sewer in the road that runs on 16th and 17th Avenue. Payments have been made to the city of Austin, and is, the city of Austin, for what is being used at this time. I feel I have paid my fair share to the city of Austin for assessments on both sides of my property. I don't believe it should be fair to make me pay for road and sewer I'm not using at this point. I appreciate the city council's time, and I would hope that I would not have to pay any additional, at least, interest on these payments. And I appreciate any amount of time that you'd give me, come up with the money to pay off these assessments. I also have another assessment that's pretty large on 17th Avenue, which this is not in concern, but that is a future concern of mine down the line. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Mr. Lang, any comments on Mr. Mecklenburg's concerns, or carve out maybe for him, or what do you suggest?
You know, the only comment I would have is, Mr. Mecklenburg has a lot of frontage, as he described. On one side of his property, he has about, he goes from 12th Street to 9th Street, essentially on both sides of his property. So there is about six or seven blocks of frontage, including 12th Street as well. So when we're doing projects in those areas, there's, you know, real costs associated with that work, and because he owns so much frontage there on both 16th Avenue and 17th Avenue, he's been involved in multiple projects over the years. And as he noted there, some of these projects date back to 1985. So here we are, 35 years, and there's just going to be lots of projects in that amount of timeframe that can affect a property like this.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel? Anything? Anybody else would like to speak?
Mr. Dankert adds some comments for context of broader annexations.
Hold off for Mr. Dankert, then.
The only other comment I had that I spoke with Administrator Clark today is, eventually, I think the city's working on annexing in some township parcels that are located within the city, and your decisions tonight could impact those, for which there's another $77,000 of those sort of assessments out there. They can't be levied until those parcels.
So those might be looking at a three-and-a-half percent reduction. Okay. So as long as counsel's aware of that, that might come to fruition, so.
Tom, do we have an idea, like, over the years, like, what percentage of people who had this assessment have paid? I mean, obviously, people have sold properties and things like that. I mean, is that, like, 2% or closer to 50%?
I haven't gone back to...
Could you use the mic? I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Marty, you want to turn me up a little bit? The, I haven't gone back to the 80s to see what those costs are, or who has been paid. All we know is every year, we get half a dozen or so, it seems, that come in and pay off, when they're looking at doing something with the property. Usually happens when they're selling. Whether they're building a house on it or not, it doesn't matter. It's whether, when they're selling the property, whoever's taking that property doesn't want to pay the assessment on it. You know, back in the 80s, when we issued this, we probably, more than likely, issued debt to do these road projects, do these sewer projects, for which back then, the interest rates were as 5% or 6%. For which the entire city tax base has paid those costs now, and been floating a loan to these individuals, in essence, for that, for those parcels. Counsel, it's up to your decision as to what you'd like to do with this. But that's just some history as to what's going on there. Very few do we ever waive or defer, like Mr. Lang and I today. There's a unique situation with a couple of them that have required us to say, well, we put a retention pond on the project. We can't assess it for a sewer, if there's never going to be a sewer there because of that. But otherwise, it's pretty much, they've all been paid off as they come in.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
I know we've got...
And just to add to that for Mr. Baskin, I would, looking at those old rolls, I looked at them a few months ago, I bet 75 to 80% have been paid off to date.
Okay, Jeffrey?
Thanks, Tom.
I guess in Mr. Mecklenburg's case, and I would assume that's probably, it's probably the same for Mr. Moreham, that they own some properties that haven't been developed and may not be developed. I mean, is that, is it a possibility to defer those, some of those, till they are, if they ever are developed? I know we do have some real costs, but they don't have a chance to recoup those costs until, or have the potential to pay for those costs until they actually develop the property. And we assess them based on the assumption that they were going to develop them, while they haven't been developed in 30 years. Maybe they won't be developed for another 30 years. I guess just something to throw out there for counsel to consider.
Are those the only two properties that, that would be undeveloped?
Those are the only two that I'm aware of. Stephen or Ann, do you know?
No, the large majority of these are undeveloped lots.
Oh, okay.
Nearly all of them, we can almost say nearly all of them are undeveloped lots. If they had developed, we would have forced them to pay their assessment.
Okay.
So there are 50 properties that are being assessed for sewer, and I would beg to guess that all of them are undeveloped.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else from the community would like to speak? Sir in the front row first. Just your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Casey McIntyre, 25th Avenue, Southwest, 1906. The undeveloped, the, I just have to react to that last little piece that we all said. This lot that I'm being assessed for now is a secondary lot. My residence exists on the lot adjacent to the empty lot, and I bought the empty lot so it could stay undeveloped. That was the whole point. So that's probably the case for some others as well. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you, yes.
The summary of what I'm feeling now is, I appreciate that you gave us the chance to speak, and I feel like you listened, and the 0% is, I feel, a fair, as much as I want to have a free pass, it's a fair adjustment, I think. But I think the lesson to be learned from this time is to not let it get out of hand. I mean, it's been 30-plus years. So let's maybe, as a community, learn to not let this happen again, okay? I got blindsided by this, and I, like I said, I don't feel like I should be excused from this. You know, it comes along with being the landowner. The land that I purchased had an assessment on it. I wasn't aware of it, so I was, the letter that I got really surprised me. I don't think that that means that I shouldn't have to pay it, but I do think that there shouldn't have been a 30-year lapse. So I think, like I said, I thank you. I appreciate, and everyone here appreciates, this open forum for us to be able to express ourselves and our concerns. But there would be less people here if it wasn't 30 years. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Just please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jim Plehal. I'm at, in Red Wing, Minnesota, 1015 West 4th Street. And I'm on behalf, here on behalf of a property, which is the Sheedy Edition, and it's right behind where Target was. I kind of represent what's the new organization, which is called Zood Intentions. It's named after my father, Bert Plehal, who bought the piece of property in the first place. And when he died, we three sons inherited it. And I notice if we'd kept it, I guess we wouldn't have to worry, because we're all over 65 years of age. But at the time, we decided to put the property into a trust for our kids. So that's what we've done. And so our six children are part of what's called Zood Intentions, and that's their name that they gave, because that's how their grandpa was known, is Zood. So that's what the whole deal was. Anyway, we got the property, and we almost lost it, because at the time we got it, we became aware that there was $126,000 paving and curb and gutters assessment. And so that was stacked on to the annual payments that we had for, for the taxes. And we let it go for, I guess, four years, and then when, when the kids' parents, that would be my brothers and I, sold a piece of property, we basically had the money to buy it back, or to pay the past due taxes, and to loan that to the kids. So that's how we got through that. And then the kids, kids sold another property, and that's the trust again. It was the Bert Plehal Trust before it became Zood Intentions. And so when they sold that piece of property, we paid back the debt that the parents were owed. And then we kept enough money in the account to where we thought we could pay the taxes for, you know, seven, eight years. And we've had, it's, the piece of property is 13 acres. About 12 of it is really tillable, and we put money into a drainage ditch, which helped. So we tried to improve the property, and then we've been renting it out for farming. And basically, we get about $1,200 a year, and the taxes are a little over double that as an Ag piece. So the point is, is that now, then, when I got this notice, like the previous gentleman, we were, in my case, obviously, we should have known that there was this, but we didn't know that this sewer assessment was there. And I couldn't agree more. I thought the two previous speakers did a great job of talking about the gratitude and appreciation for our being able to talk about this, the 30-year thing. And it might even be helpful on tax statements to say, hey, there's a, there's a, there's this assessment that's hanging out there, that, you know, if that were on the tax statements, that would really be helpful, because then this wouldn't be all of a sudden a blindside. And by the way, we could have kept a little more money from the distribution of the kids, which they had to use to pay taxes anyway, but we could have not given them that money, and we'd have had enough for some of this. So that was just a year ago.
Thank you, Jim. Ann, you spoke about this last meeting, about how this was discovered. Could you speak about it again, just for clarity for the audience, and how these assessments came to light?
Well, just to speak to his point about the tax statements, the county issues the tax statements, so that's not something that we could really have listed on there. Again, all of these assessments, they were deferred for 30 years, and we kind of, they kind of sat quietly. When people sell properties and they do title work on it, title companies run assessment searches through our office, and that is how it's typically discovered, when the title changes hands. Every time title work isn't done, not every time that's done. So if you chose as a buyer not to do title work, you may have not discovered these assessments. So they would have been, you know, on your title, it would have been recorded at the county as a resolution against your title as a lien, and then also on an assessment search. So that's how we place these liens out there for this long. There really was never a good time to bring them forward, so we just kind of wanted this project to get wrapped up now.
Well, again, understand that, appreciate it. And I think that the county and the city are both government entities and could work together to have something put on a stack statement that, that would show, since, since there's a line that says deferred assessments that are part of the tax bill, there could certainly be a line saying, these taxes are not part of the tax, or these are not currently charged. And, but they're, but they're sitting out there. So I think that wouldn't be a very difficult thing for the county and the city to get together on to do, as it would be, in my opinion. And I certainly take responsibility, as a trustee of the trust, that it's something I should have known about, although we did not. It was, it was not done as a passing of the title necessarily, but within the family. So that's how, and I can understand it, when somebody bought property, that's a different story, but anyway. So again, I'm just letting you know that's going to be a major difficulty for us, since the income on there is, we all, the Zood Intentions only has one other property, actually three, but one main property, saleable property, up, up next to where the apartments were just built, North Walmart, so, and hopefully, that could be sold at some point, as well as this, this piece of property itself in the future. But until it is, it's, it's, we may have to be letting it go again, as we have in the past, for, and trying to resurrect it if we're so fortunate to. That's, that's our difficulty. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Plehal. Anyone else in the audience like to speak on this matter? Public hearing? Sure, come on forward. Just name and address, please.
My name is Carolyn Osmanson, and my address is 1307 21st Street, Southwest. And I guess my, well, first, everybody who's spoken, I want to appreciate how well you've spoke, because it answered, or questioned, and I've gotten answers for some of this. But I was just wondering, for, for me, I have the property, and I got it from my mom, and my dad had passed away four years ago, and my, we've lived there for a number of decades. And my thought was that my dad, it was always so responsible about everything that he's ever done. You know, he served in the Army for, gosh, 20 years, and with distinction and what have you. So for me, it's kind of hard for me to think that my dad, if there was an assessment on there, hadn't already paid. And with that said, how long would he have had to have kept records of making a payment on this? Because normally, like, with taxes or whatever, you have, what, seven years? So I was just wondering, like, I mean, I don't have record of that he paid it, but then again, when he passed and what have you, I don't know if he would have, I mean, that's, I guess that's my concern, is like, if he had already paid it, how long would be, be expected to keep records of this? Or to expect that suddenly, when it gets turned over to his child, you know, then boom, get assessed, or find out about this assessment? You know, and, and he's not here, and my mom is, doesn't live here. She's up north, and she wouldn't have known about this, more than likely, he probably would have just taken care of it. I guess that's my concern.
My, my hunch is, and Stephen and Ann can correct me, but since it was deferred, it was probably never offered for him to pay it. It was always pending some later development of that property, so it wasn't a statement he didn't pay.
Okay.
It was deferred to a point where there was potentially going to be some other property built on that.
Okay.
Structure built on that property. If I'm wrong, correct me, Stephen or Ann. That's what I'm guessing, is that it was deferred, never, never billed.
Okay. Well, there's two different lots. There's one with the homestead, the home, and then the other lot was just a pole shed that did not have the water, did not have the sewer.
The home was probably paid, and the lot wasn't, as that was deferred, because there was no structure.
Okay. And I want to thank you so much for listening to me and clarifying that. Thank you.
Thanks, Carolyn.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak on this matter? And counsel, certainly entertain a motion. We need to call for written objections first. Has there been any written objections, Mr. Lang?
No, we, I have not received any written objections.
Okay. Then looking for a resolution on 5D, declaring the costs with some creativity, maybe.
Are you, if you, this would just be the cost, and then if you wanted to change any of the terms, that would be on the next resolution?
Okay, that's what I was thinking, so. Thank you. So move the resolution declaring the costs. So motion to declare the costs on 5D. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pachusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Now 5E, resolution adopting the assessment role.
So moved to adopt the assessment roles to be assessed for 10 years at 0% interest.
Second.
Correct way to state it. Okay, been a motion and a second to adopt the 10-year assessment for 0% interest. There, all in favor, I'm sorry, Tom, resolution.
Councilmember Pachusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Osmah.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Similar, but not too different, is number, item number six, public hearing for deferred water assessment. The amount to be assessed is $55,206.90 at three-and-a-half percent interest for 10 years. Presentation of the project associated the assessments. Mr. Lang, you want to, is there anything more you want to brief on this?
Just the only differences here, on the last one, it was 50 properties. This one is 31 properties. And again, coming up later today, we'd request waiving or eliminating the two Wolfgang Baumann properties that are included in this assessment role. That is all.
And has there been any written objections?
No, we have not received any.
Okay. Counsel?
Hey, Stephen, one last question for you. Can you remind us, like, why now? I mean, not that we want to kick it down another 10 years, but if the question comes up, you know, hey, we've had 30 years to do it, but why are we doing it now? What's our rationale on that?
Ann, you want to touch on that?
Well, you know, generally, these were deferred for 30 years, they're not, you know, we didn't, we're taking a chunk of them right now, which some of them are 30, some of them are 35, some of them are, you know, longer down the road. I mean, the biggest thing right now is because Cheryl's going to be retiring in the next year or so and Cheryl has so much knowledge on all of these things that she's, she's been here for 43 years and she knows exactly who some of these people are when they're coming in to ask questions. She remembers talking to them 30 years ago. So the biggest driving force right now, I mean, we would have done it at some point in the next couple of years, but just because our specialist on our assessments, all of that knowledge will be leaving the city in a short time.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
And Stephen?
Yep.
Any public wish to speak about the assessment for the deferred water?
Sure, Casey. In the, the information that you just read, you mentioned the interest rate. Again, many of us, including myself, also have these water deferments too. So my question is, is there going to be a conversation about 0% interest on the water? Because I think.
Yeah, hang in there. We'll have to untouch him.
I'm sorry, but.
We gave it to you on the shore, we're going to take it back.
Going to go 7%.
Yeah. Better to ask the question before, though.
Exactly, you never know.
So looking for number 6D, resolution declaring the costs.
So move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. We'll call this the Casey McIntyre assessment. Item number 6E, resolution adopting the assessment role for that matter.
So move the, so move the resolution adopting the assessment role at the 55,206.90 at 0% interest for 10 years.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Postma.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes 7-0, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, folks, too, for.
Thank you, everyone, for coming and talking to us.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Item number seven, moving along as a motion for the removal of a human rights commissioner. Just to set the table a bit on this, this is a topic that I think everyone is educated on. It came to my attention maybe a month ago by way of the Human Rights Committee and some public comments that were made. So my initial, at first blush, my initial reaction was similar to the reaction I have today, is that these commissions and committees, no matter what they are for the city, certainly have appointed members on, they're not elected, but they are appointed, and each commission and committee does have leadership in the form of chairs as well as membership. And when or if something were to come up within that membership, I'm of the opinion that that is kind of a self-governing entity and that they are allowed to govern within through their chairs and through their leadership. So I was not one to get in the way of, didn't matter the issue, it really didn't, but if the commissioner committee felt strongly enough to make that recommendation or to move that forward for, to remove someone, I just felt it was, it was the committee's prerogative as they're the ones educated. So as time went by, I did meet with this person in person and we had a good meeting, certainly agree to disagree on some things, but it was a fair meeting, I thought. And then at that point, I think the commission was asking that commissioner to resign. He chose not to and at that next meeting of the Human Rights Commission, it was on the agenda, so that person did have a chance to prepare remarks and statements as well. And that meeting was public. That meeting continues to be on the city website. The Human Rights Commission meeting is public, so it can be viewed by anybody. I'm assuming the council all had the chance to view that and also has been educated by the public for or against such issue through email, phone calls, whatever it might be. And I struggle and I want people to be clear that I had significant struggles of what to do as far as allowing some public comment at this meeting. You just sat through what was considered a public hearing. So that public hearing is open to the public and we welcome public comment. This item isn't required for public hearing. And as much as I did struggle, I thought in fairness, since that meeting time took place, folks have had the opportunity to view it or, or see it in person, ask questions, have comments, but it, I didn't think this was the place to rehash it. So with that, I know that the next step in having to either honor or not honor the requests of the Human Rights Commission to remove a commissioner is up to the, to the council at this point, but I am not taking public comment at this point. And I think that's just the best way to handle it. So I'm opening it up to councils, if they want to comment or give me their point of view, I'd certainly be open to it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would, you know, start the comment by saying, you know, as a former chair of the Human Rights Commission, clearly, you know, big supporter of the work that this group does, firmly believe in the mission and, you know, I think are a very, very positive force for this community. You know, and I really thank the people that have come out, you know, I think, thank the people that have reached out. You know, and this is obviously a serious issue. I mean, we're being asked for, the first time in the history of Austin, at least from the research that I've been able to find, to remove a commissioner who is a sitting appointed, confirmed unanimously commissioner from a commission. And that's not an issue that we take very lightly. And so, you know, I've done a lot of reflection on this and, you know, the lens that I put on it is what's in the best interest of Austin, which is the lens that I would use for, for any council issue. And, you know, with that, you know, I think we've got to think beyond this specific issue and think about what is the long-term impact of a decision that we make tonight, one way or the other. And because of that, I'm opposed to voting in favor of this removal because I think it sets a dangerous precedent that is going to negatively impact our community. I think that while this group is well-intentioned, empowering leadership with, who is not elected to choose their own members if there's a disagreement about specific items within a debate becomes a really slippery slope. And I think it has a devastatingly chilling impact on open debate, on hearing a diversity of viewpoints and opinions. And I've been a firm believer that I may not agree with somebody's opinion, but the way our democratic institutions work is that instead of banning someone for making an argument, you've got to make a stronger and more compelling argument. And my concern is, in this case, we're going to create a chilling effect where if I'm a minority member on any other commission, now I've got to think through, do I really want to ask this question about or vote against an issue that the chair or the majority thinks is the right way to go? Because now the risk isn't just that I'm going to get outvoted. I mean, I think an eight to one majority, even if the person in question doesn't agree with the majority, still is a pretty compelling majority. But now I'm going to potentially get removed from a position? And so, you know, I think regardless of what people think about this situation, this is an incredibly slippery slope for us to go down and is not something that's going to benefit our community.
Mr. Obala, you have something?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, and everyone that came out today on this issue. I think in my city council work, this is one of the second busy week regarding this issue. Phone call night, conversation with the community member, both side. And I agree with the mayor that the city council, their job is not to micromanage any commission that we have in town here. Our job as a city council, we appoint those people and then their respective duty is to exercise their right within their organization. It's like taking a job. If you work for a job, if you took a job and sign a contract, you have to abide by their rules and, and by the company. And if the company you work for, they tell you, this is the contract we have, so you have to agree with it if you want to work for us. That's the essence that everyone move when you take a job. Before you take the job, you have to agree with it. But as employee for that organization, if you start coming up with some ideas that, oh, this company is not in my interests, your best job is to tell if it's not what you're here for, you can leave or look for another job. I think this is what the commission did in regard of this. And to be honest, to speak on this, the individual, I can say, he has helped me, he has helped some of my peers the first time I moved here. But looking into this situation, I feel like there's a turning point into this and I have talked to different community member and I see concern. I see, because sometimes, even if you're doing good thing for the community and you do good thing today and tomorrow, you're acting different, people can reflect back on what you're doing. And I've been having a lot of concern on this regard. So I would like to disagree with Council Jason Baskin because if the Human Rights Commission feel like there are some issues that, or the work that is not being addressed correctly, or this behavior of individual within their organization that is not aligned with the mission and the charter that has been created, I think they have the right to ask that person. So I think our duty here to, if we say human right, everyone have to be considered as a human, no matter who you are. But if we have to choose who is a human and who we should take their action, I think that's how we question ourselves. We're elected here to serve everyone in Austin. And for someone who served on a Human Rights Commission before, I never had to have a discussion when it come to human right that I can pick and say, I have to see this. Some of the comment in the video, it offensive to me. I watch it over and over and I'm like, is this okay? So it's up to the city council tonight because if the individual feel like he's being targeted because of his activity, I think it's the good thing. Maybe the Human Rights Commission is not the best interest of where he's serving so that he can be free and do everything that he would like to do. So with that, I will, I will vote in favor of removing the commissioner.
I have not served on the Human Rights Commission. And watching that tape and listening to responses, for me, to see an eight, zero vote for removal of somebody, I have to respect that. When you have them, you know, eight to nothing saying this person doesn't belong in this group as a commissioner, I have to respect what they want and, and I agree with Obala.
Anyone else? Joyce?
I'm just going to read my statement here. The issues here are not because of Dan's personal beliefs. What we have, what have become issues, though, are that Dan openly expresses his personal beliefs via various social platforms. I have received numerous emails, both for and against Dan's removal from the commission. I have read each one, have noted the points mentioned and have made many phone calls. I feel that I've made an informed decision. I trust in the Human Rights Commission and the thorough job they have done in gathering information from the citizens and they have backed this information with photos and emails. I'm not here to judge Dan as a person, however, we are here to decide whether he is still the right fit for the Human Rights Commission. The Human Rights Commission is just that, it's human rights, it's all humans, there's no exception. And because of Dan's vocal support of various anti-groups that don't align with, align with this commission, I therefore vote in support of the removal.
Thank you, Joyce. Anyone else? Mike?
Can I make a statement?
No, not a public hearing, sorry, Dan. Mike?
When I first heard of this issue, like I think everybody else in the council, I watched the video. I got a lot of emails and a lot of phone calls as well from folks, both sort of in support and, and not in support of Dan's removal. You know, my first instinct was that this might be a little bit politically motivated and I was concerned about that because I really don't like having any sort of partisan politics in city government as much as possible. I, I ran for city council because it's not a partisan issue and I like the fact that I get to work with everybody here. I, I did hear some concerns about Dan's ability to sort of support all human rights and I've seen some of the good work that Dan has done, in particular with some of our refugee and minority communities. But to be honest, I also heard some concerns from some of those folks too, that some of, some of his work, they felt was maybe a little superficial in, in that, you know, they, they just, and to be quite frank, that was what sort of swayed me to the point where I need to respect the Human Rights Commission's decision to remove him from the board. It doesn't mean that I don't respect Dan, it doesn't mean that I wouldn't consider him for one of our other commissions as a city, but for this particular one, I don't feel he's the right fit at this time.
Anybody else? Rebecca?
I just want to say I appreciate all the comments and that people have emailed, called, written. I would say I watched the video as well and still torn at this point which way to go. I have, I do believe there's good points on both sides, to be honest with you. I've talked to some people and the wavering support, I mean, I've got an even split, to be honest with you, of people in favor of the removal and people in favor of keeping Dan on the board. But just for, you know, where I'm at, I'm still kind of tossing around a little bit, but the eight, zero vote kind of bothers me. I was questioning why, Dan, you didn't vote yourself?
I wasn't allowed to vote.
So that was the only question I, I really had was why, why there wasn't a nay vote for yourself. But that's just where I stand right now in this.
Jeff, you're on the Human Rights Commission as liaison, any comments?
I guess, I understand what, what Jason is saying and setting a precedence, but if it was any, any other commission, I think I would agree with that because other commissions do want a variety of input. But when you look at the mission statement of the Human Rights Commission, it is for everybody. It's not for, you know, it's not like you want varying viewpoints on the commission. You want everybody that's in favor of human rights, rights for every human. And I guess looking at an eight, zero vote, eight, one vote, because I'm assuming Dan passed, I was at the meeting, the microphone went around the table, every commissioner was allowed to say their vote and for some reason, Dan did not vote. You handed your microphone to the, to Miguel.
Okay, let's move.
But anyway, if it was me, I guess personally, I don't feel I would want to serve on a commission that voted eight to one to remove me. I don't think I would be effective. I think, given Dan's position in the community, the things he's involved with, he can certainly continue those efforts in various other outlets without being on the commission. And I think the commission would move forward and be better served without him on it at this time.
And you think one point of clarification is important, which the mission statement of the Human Rights Commission is nothing to do with 100% agreement. The mission statement is to cultivate a just.
But if you're not for the human rights of every human.
Jeff, if you could let me finish, I'm sorry. The mission statement of the Human Rights Commission is to cultivate a just and inclusive community where diversity is valued and human rights are respected. And so I think let's just have the totality of the facts. And Mr. Mayor, you know, with all due respect, I guess I would have liked to hear from Dan and I recognize that we don't want to turn this into a circus. I guess, as I put myself in the shoes of somebody, if my name was being questioned, I would love the opportunity to at least defend myself, but certainly understand.
Yeah. I, I struggle with that, Jason, but again, I go back to, I understand your point. It was a public hearing at the Human Rights Commission. Dan was prepared because he knew it was on the agenda. He stated his points and the human rights stated theirs. So that was the appropriate body to air those kind of statements out and this is not. But I do appreciate your comments and they're noted, thank you. So with that, I'd take. I would like to make a motion for the removal of Dan from the Human Rights Commission.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Want to voice, roll call on that, Tom, please?
Motion by Councilmember Fisher, seconded by Councilmember Obala to remove Mr. Mueller from the Human Rights Commission, so an aye vote is in favor of such. Councilmember Pashusta.
Aye.
Fisher. Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Nay.
Obala.
Aye.
Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six, one, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Moving on to item number eight, granting the planning and zoning department the power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegal stored vehicles at the following properties. Eight A is one thousand one, fourth Ave, Northeast, folly and Saudi property. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. Eight B, seven thirteen, fourth Ave, Northeast, the Miller property. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. At this point, looking for any citizens that wish to address the council that wasn't on the agenda. Elaine, want to step forward and just name and address, please?
Thank you, Your Honor and council members. Elaine Hansen, twenty-nine oh five, Seventh Avenue Southwest. I'm actually here today in my role as president of the Austin Area Chamber of Commerce, just to share some comments and concerns I've received from some of our members. I know you're just beginning your work on the budget, but there is a concern about what that would look like for 2022. And a number of them expressed a concern about the number of twelve percent that has been floated up. So, just wanted to bring forward that concern on behalf of the Austin Area Chamber of Commerce and our members.
Okay. I appreciate that, Elaine. That, that conversation certainly will be more robust as the days go on. My stance is always, I just want a city that can function, a very functioning city, doesn't mean we have to have all the bells and whistles, but we need to function. So, I appreciate the chamber's response. And I don't, Christopher, he's here. Christopher Moore, our honorary counsel, would you like to say anything? Comments? Questions? We're good? Christopher, I really like you. I like you more and more each meeting. Thank you for your attendance, though, Christopher. Christopher Moore, for those that don't know, is our honorary counsel person this, the six weeks, I believe it is. And, and when he's done with his term, we're always looking, so while I have an audience, we're always looking for people to apply to be the next council person, the honorary counsel person. I think there's some great value in that and what it brings to the council, what it brings to the community. So, as you have questions, Christopher can answer what kind of a, kind of a lift it is, heavy or light, he'll tell you. But I certainly get the word out that we're, we're looking for more people to, to step forward to be in that honorary counsel position. So, thank you. Reports and recommendations. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor. We met with Senator Doranek. Appreciate him stopping by to give us a recap of the legislative session. Representative Mueller let us know that our technical corrections for our seven point four or five million for the wastewater treatment plant design and engineering was included in the close of the session, so we're thankful for that. Senator Klobuchar plans to visit the Hornell Institute on Thursday. We're excited to welcome her to our premier institution. Other than that, Julie Kleinfeldter has an item.
Julie, on the Zoom. Welcome.
Evening. Yes, I wanted to thank everyone who came out for the twenty-fifth anniversary of the library building. We had a great evening, a really nice turnout, a nice evening. I got to hear a lot of really great stories of people's memories of the old building and all the happenings that went on with the construction of the new. And we got to get out some information about some future projects here at the library. We did get our construction grant that we were hoping for, and I will be getting more information to the council here in the next few weeks. Other than that, just want to remind everybody that summer reading program is going strong, and if you have kiddos, to bring them into the library and get them signed up. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Joyce?
I just want to say congratulations to our new pillars of Austin, Sue Grove, Dr. Olav Hegi, and Jacob Herzog. Sounds like they're all very well-deserved.
Yeah, they've done some things.
Yes, yes.
Mike?
Just a congratulations to the chamber for running an amazing parade. Great turnout. And really, so Freedom Fest was a little different this year. We had some different folks sort of running things. I thought it was a great job. I know Anne and Craig were very involved with that. I know the Parks and Rec crew helping set everything up. I have the fortune, fortunate vantage point to be up on stage because I'm a member of the community band. And it's my favorite picture of Austin every year to take is about nine thirty before the fireworks start, because they're just, it's the biggest crowd in Austin every year. And you can just feel the patriotism, and this year, you could just feel the extra energy for the fact that we could all get together again. So, it was fantastic. Well done by everybody who had a hand in it.
Thank you, Mike. Rebecca?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jeff?
Yes, I guess I'd like to say, good job for the, the parade and Freedom Fest. Congrats to the chamber for their efforts and to staff, Anne, for your efforts. It was great. It was kind of fun this year. For the first time in several years, I was able to watch the parade instead of being in the parade. So, it was a little bit different vantage point. So, that was kind of fun. But look forward to next year, I guess. And it was great to see everybody and great fireworks show that night as well. So, that's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Obala?
I think I just want to echo with my other council members, the parade was awesome. I tried to watch, but my daughter couldn't let me. She want to match with everyone. So, I'm like, wow, come on. So, but she really enjoying it. But the only bad part at night, ooh, the fireworks, everything go torch, you would cry. I'm like, okay, now we have to go, so we have to leave early. But it was, it was awesome, so, to see that. So, and congrats to everyone who were involved. So.
Jason?
I just want to thank everybody that's reached out, you know, whether it's on assessments or the Human Rights Commissioner, anything. You know, we make better decisions as a council when, when people are involved. And, you know, I think we're confronted with some issues that are easy, and I think we're confronted with some issues that are not. And, you know, ultimately, it's got to come down to a yea or nay vote, and, you know, that's what we're elected and accountable for. But I think the more involvement we have with community members, the more robust the discussion is, and the, the better off we are as a community. Doesn't mean we're going to agree on everything. Doesn't mean that we're going to be a hundred percent aligned on everything we do as a community, nor probably should we be. But, you know, we continue to be an incredible community where diversity has a ton of value, and I look forward to seeing that work continue.
Thank you, Jason.
I would also like to comment on the past weekend's events for the Fourth. I had the privilege of riding in the pink Discover Austin pig with Mary King. So, it was nice and to see the stacks of people four rows deep all along the parade route. It was fantastic. Going down to the ban, to the bandsheller, listening to music, the food, the fireworks were amazing. It was just great to see people out and about again, and it was just fantastic. So, Elaine, thank you for your work as well.
Petunia, Paul. You drove Petunia.
I was impressed you could fit in there.
That was good. Well, I have nothing else to add from whatever else, what else said. I totally agree with all the, all the folks up here. So, again, it's certainly not the most pleasant meeting, and I'm sorry, some folks that were somewhat, we, we agree to disagree, but I think that's the process that we have. So, I appreciate everybody's attendance. Thank you. And we'll take a motion to adjourn to Monday, July nineteen. So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and we adjourned. Thank you. Okay. Five minutes till the work session. It's, it's only one item, I believe, right? So, I, I made the executive call and said, no food. Sorry if you wanted food.
Should we just Venmo request you with the B and J afterwards?
That'd be good.